And it's rolling.
All right. We will call the Grant County Board of Commissioners to order Monday, August 15th. Knowing all three members are present, we'd invite you to stand. Mr. Burton leads us in prayer and Mr. Wright, the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, shall we pray? Our Father, we come to you today thanking you for who you are, the God who loves each and every one of us. We ask that you be with us today during the meeting, help guide us along in making decisions. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. All right. Moving into our housekeeping, we have current claims, minutes, payroll. And let's go with our claims and payroll first. On August 8th, we had a preapproval that carried to us general invoice edit reports in the amount of $229,666.71. Other batch, $18,813.82. And highway batch, $29,597.72 for a grand total of $278,078.25. That was preapproved, so we would need a motion to ratify the August 8th preapproval.
So do we.
And second. Motion, Mr. Burton, second. Mr. Wright, any discussions or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried unanimously. We have today's invoice edit reports, August 15th. And the general batch is for $29,043.33. Other batch, $80,702.89. Highway batch, $5,812.65 for a grand total of $115,558.96. We would need a motion to approve these payments. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wright, second. Mr. Burton, any questions on those invoice edit reports? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried unanimously. And with regard to payroll number 16, we preapproved that disbursement on August 2nd. And the gross amount was $539,910.62. That was paid out on August 5th. Since it was a preapproval, we would need a motion to ratify the payroll number 16.
So do we.
And second. Motion, Mr. Burton, to ratify payroll number 16, second, Mr. Wright. Since everybody got their check, I don't think anybody's questioning that right now. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried. All right, we have carried for the payroll and our claims. In your packet, we have two sets of minutes, Monday, January the 3rd, and Tuesday, January the 18th. Those have had those circulation for a while. We have edits that we've made on them. And with your approval, Mr. Burton, we need to make a motion to adopt these.
Okay, I move to adopt.
All right, and I'm assuming I need the second, since you were not with us. You don't feel comfortable doing that, that's fine. I will second the motion on the minutes. Any discussion, further discussion on those? All right, Mr. Burton has made the motion to adopt January 3rd and January 18th of 2022 minutes as presented. And I've seconded it, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those abstaining.
Abstaining.
Carried, two to one extension. And thank you, gentlemen. Just about got our homework done. Moving to communications and board updates. We'll start with the auditor and work around the room. Anything, Mr. Auditor?
I believe at this time, nothing to report unusual, so I'll pass to the next one.
We'll just make a question. Wednesday, we've got a council meeting, is that correct?
Well, it's the budget hearing starts. The county council will be in session. We have Wednesday, Thursday this week, Wednesday, Thursday next week are the four nights of the public hearing for the budget. So that will happen. And they are going to have a public hearing prior to the opening of the budget session on Wednesday night regarding the county will tax.
Will tax, okay. So Wednesday, Thursday this week, Wednesday, Thursday next week.
Correct.
I think commissioners are scheduled for this week. They manipulated that around a little bit for me, so.
Okay, I'm not sure, I mean, I've seen the schedule, I don't really know what it is.
Okay, very good. Other questions for the auditor?
No.
All right, other elected officials, special boards, committees. I think we've got Solid Waste District this week. We've got Eric Plan tonight. We've got other things. We will move to IT.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
What I got in front of you today is the updated AT&amp;T plan to add an additional phone, like or voice over IP failover system. As you gentlemen know, a couple of months ago, we had that issue with where AT&amp;T's equipment malfunctioned and we were without internet for two days. And, you know, our phones are bundled into that as well. So we're looking to add a, add this failover capability so that way that gives us control. So that way, in the event that was to happen again for some reason, it would give us the ability to be able to forward certain office numbers to cell phones or other, you know, working phone numbers. And that way, people are still up and running. Like I said, for the additional cost per month on our current AT&amp;T bill, I believe it was $157.50. And they also gave me an agreement right here. So I guess my question to you gentlemen is, is if we want to proceed and if we need to, need to let the Kyle, our attorney, look at it.
My first reaction when I heard about this is, yes, we definitely need our attorney to look at it because it was their fault, not ours, and they want to charge us more money.
Yeah.
So it would be my intention to have a meeting with our attorney, probably executive, since this could involve litigation, since it wasn't our fault. That would be my intention.
I agree.
And we talk about that litigation if we have to. I will say for public record, Mr. Sadoff had a meeting with them, said, "Look, you guys messed up on this and we need, we need to be reciprocated in some way." Which, what did they do? They said, "We'll charge you more." So that's, that's not making at least this commissioner a happy camper, so.
Yeah, yeah. And like I said, with AT&amp;T, they're the, you know, biggest, you know, provider in town, along with Spectrum. But, you know, Spectrum, some of their, they have some service issues, just with our experience. Usually AT&amp;T, they haven't been too bad, but when it is bad, it's, they're very slow moving and it's, it's like pulling teeth. So, yeah, I completely understand.
Just to help us again, and I hate to create more work for you, Marcus, because I know you guys stay busy. Do we have a narrative of timeline of when it went down, contacts, who was contacted, and some kind of narrative to say, "These are the things that took place and this is when we find out?"
Yeah, there's emails and obviously I have like all my call history on my cell phone of me, you know, trying almost every hour to get them to move. Part of the problem was is they, so I'd call and they would open a ticket up with one team. They're like, "Well, you know, this, you didn't call the right number. You need to go to this team." So then I'd call that team, they'd close that other ticket down. Then this other team, I mean, there was a lot of back and forth. And it just, it seemed like it was a lot harder than what it should have been. And I'd reached out to our rep because I figured if anybody would know who we needed to contact, it'd be him. And, you know, basically, he just gave me the same support number. And that was just a never-ending cycle. I mean, we were supposed to get a replacement router that we were supposed to swap it out with. And, you know, they called me on a, it was like nine o'clock at night on a Wednesday, saying, "Hey, there was a gentleman, he's going to be around to drop it off." And, you know, I drove in that night and we looked around, we couldn't find anything.
Well, if you will put together kind of that timeline for us, that information, so we can work with our attorney on this, we'll, we'll review this again before we commit paying them more for something they messed up.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll give Justin the agreement he, he gave me.
Yes, go ahead. So Spectrum and AT&amp;T, there's other providers in town, correct? MetroNet?
Like I said, not to, not to my knowledge. I know MetroNet, they recently just got, I believe it's CASA, I believe they're working with them. But I don't know if they serve us out here. So, I mean, if that's the direction we want to go to, I can, you know, check with them to see if they would be able to take us as well.
I mean, I, I think it's one of those things where we constantly want to look at dollars. And since MetroNet's really trying to get into the new area and things like that. No, I don't have any stock in MetroNet. But I truly believe that, you know, this might be a good time to go ahead and take a look at that and just let AT&amp;T know that we're looking.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, I don't, and then do on the redundancy, because my understanding, this, this second, this would be kind of a secondary circuit. Do we stay with AT&amp;T? And I know it'd probably cost us a lot more to go with another party just for that line, to go ahead and make sure that we can do that. But in the same token, when you go down, I mean, I know what phones are like and stuff. It's not good.
No.
Nobody can contact anybody. And so I, I don't know, I'd have some heartburn with this as well. I wouldn't run the front end of this thing. But I would definitely do a little bit of research and reach out to some other companies and just see what they, they've got. And I'd let my AT&amp;T rep know.
Yep, absolutely. Like I said, that's what I'll do.
Okay.
All right, yep, thanks again, gentlemen, I appreciate your time.
I see Tony, but I also see that our EMA director came in. Do you have any updates for us before we go to the highway?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
So we've been working on the damage assessment from the storms on July 23rd. While it was a little late this morning, but, so those who continue to roll in on the 211 and the webpage, which is really where we prefer folks to go, it's quicker access. So there, that's helping us a lot with really covering the storm damage that's out there because we calculated it's about 56 square miles of county that was received some damage. So it's tough to cover all that area with just a few folks, so this is helping. The state will be looking at that as well. The thought process is that, and I did notice this morning, there's four counties now. Vanderburg County is in with us, Knox County, and Davies County, along with Grant County. Looking at the state as a whole as to whether or not we would qualify for any kind of FEMA assistance. But there is state assistance out there as well for Grant County if we meet the threshold. So it's important that we get that data back to us. Businesses as well, the Small Business Administration is looking at that. We know that there were businesses in town that, that lost stuff because of the power was out for 30 some hours for them. So we're in the process of gathering that data. Anything anybody can do to help push that information out there is greatly appreciated.
We're, we're in a two-week window right now, aren't we?
Yes, so we have till September 21st. So a little more than that, yeah, is the deadline, 60 days from the date of the storm. That, that's where we are on that. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Director, would that be any kind of loss of revenue as well?
Yes.
If a business was shut down for that period of time?
Any, any loss at all, if you, and even if it's covered by insurance, the state still wants to know that dollar amount that as a whole goes into the declaration as to whether or not we will meet, it goes into the threshold.
Okay.
So, yeah, loss of revenue for businesses, loss of actual product. Tree debris, if you paid somebody to pick up trees in your yard and all that, that's all, that's all the kind of stuff we want to know.
Have we shared that with the chamber or so they can share that with their members?
I did, yes. So I haven't followed up with Kylie, but I did send her the information last week. And we actually have a meeting at the U C this Wednesday with those folks.
Good, and same way with the Grove Council, correct?
I'll reach out to them, I have not yet.
Okay, I, I think that would be another avenue because manufacturers and things like that.
Yes.
You know, when you talk about a loss of revenue and you're down for two days.
Yeah. And then you start looking at the numbers, it's, it really adds up quickly.
Yeah, yeah. Good, thank you, thank you for what you do.
Sure, glad to do it. The only other thing else I have is the COVID numbers, they're still on the increase. And we'll meet with schools on the first Monday in September, no, second Monday, I suppose. Unless we do that on Tuesday, I'll figure that out. But we really want to make sure that we stay in, in contact with the schools now that they're, they're back open. We know that the spread is already up, so we'll continue to watch that.
You're being prompted under new business after number four. We do need to review the CDC's most recent statements. We will make an update on our policy locally on what we're doing, so appreciate that reminder.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. And we interrupted, Tony was all but standing up, ready to walk up to the podium when I, so sorry, Tony.
That's quite all right. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. I don't have a lot, but we're going to spend some money. We opened bids for Bridge 789, which is 10th Street, two weeks ago. We sent those to the consultant and they came back with everything checking out okay. We had two bids. Milestone was at $677,956. And RL McCoy was at $684,663.50. Milestone was the low bid and I've got a contract that we need signed today. If you approve that.
So we have the recommendation to go with Milestone with winning bid of $677,956.
That is correct.
That recommendation is coming to us and we get to sign some paperwork if we decide to do that. We have been working on this with the City of Marion for quite some time. This is 10th Street. This is the 10th Street. We'll have, instead of a bridge and then a gap and then a sidewalk, we will have one unit that has a bridge and sidewalk together. That'll help with foot traffic as well as upgrade this bridge, which has needed it for quite some time.
This is on the west side of the bypass.
No, it's west side of Washington for Nebraska.
If you go to Nebraska.
Right, you're by the toll booth.
Okay, 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 okay. And again, just ask some questions because just as we go through here. So does the city have anything in this one or no?
No, just utilities.
We, we cover all the bridges.
We do, okay.
Unless they're on the state road or interstate system.
Gotcha.
We do that, so we would still have to put a bridge and sidewalk up. We've just been working with them so that they can tie that into their, it's right off of the Cardinal Greenway and.
Gotcha. Okay. So you need a motion?
I would entertain a motion to.
I would make a motion, we have approved the Milestone contract for the $677,956.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wright, second. Mr. Burton, any further discussion or questions?
This, this would come out of?
This is a community crossing grant.
Okay.
It's already been approved.
Okay, perfect.
I think we got $350,000 out of that.
Yeah, yeah, we applied for 700 and we got 350, so.
Okay.
It'll more than cover the, the cost of the contract. In fact, we'll have to give some money back to the state, so.
Okay, good, good.
All right, any other question, discussion? All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's carry. Do we have, do we need to sign that in blue?
Yes, I have the blue pen right here.
Homeland Security Blue. I didn't bring my blue pen today, so.
No, I did, I actually prepared.
All right. Are we done with our paving for the year?
No, we are paving right now on 450 North. We started at Van Buren this morning and going to 600 East, we'll be working on that all week. And then the plan is to go to La Grille and start on State Road 9 and go to 450, well, 500, 450. And that's supposed to be next week, weather permitting.
I don't see a place for Jim to attest, so evidently we don't need that.
Uh, yeah, I didn't see it either, which I thought was kind of unusual, but.
You'll find out later.
We'll, we'll send it and then, yeah, it'll be like, hey, we forgot this page. Then the other thing I have is for Bridge 16, which is on EOW North, 600 North. It's got a crack in one of the beams and we've had it kind of partially blocked off for almost a year now. And we'd like to enter into a contract with United for the design, right-of-way, utilities, all that, all the engineering. And that's for $191,925.
That's for engineering?
For design of the bridge, right-of-way, utility coordination, basically any engineering services that would be needed for that project.
So it's just for the engineering side and not to actually physically do the work?
Correct.
Do we, do we usually get multiple bids for that or is?
I don't know if they would talk to other consultants, but normally it's kind of, the way we do it is we kind of pick different consultants to do different projects.
I think what we do is professional services, we share the, we, we hire and then when it comes to bidding out the bridges for actual work, that's, that's when we do the bidding.
Does the engineering firm get anything from the actual work that's being done?
No.
No?
No, they have no part in the construction.
Okay, okay.
They just usually tell us how much it's going to cost us.
And we try and keep the bidders to that, that number.
Exactly.
Chair looking for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the engineering fee from United for $191,925.
Second.
On Bridge 16.
On Bridge 16, I'm sorry, yes.
All right, any other question or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is carried.
There's our blue pen back again.
Got to use it again, huh?
Justin, I don't think it's necessary, but we might as well.
I apologize, I have not looked at our bridge inspection report for a while, but did we have any other? We used to have top four that were in need of replacement. Were any of these on, on that, was this?
No, this one came up as after inspection, it cracked and.
But we don't have any others that are currently closed?
No, no. No, and they're working on 1,000 as we speak, that's been closed for two years. I think that should be probably middle to late September when they get it open. I think David said they were hoping to do the asphalt work before October 1st, so. And I do have a set of plans for Bridge 789 that David said you would like to see.
Yeah.
There's really not a good picture of what the bridge is going to look like, but it's just, it's just drawing, so.
Okay.
But I do have that available for you.
That's when we do need to test. So Jim needs to sign it. We get lucky here.
We do.
There's the blue pen. Get all this out of my stuff. This is the blue one?
That's the blue.
Blue, it's running out of ink.
Oh, you need to get in there here.
I got the last part.
You can see it, but it's getting, that's pretty weak.
Why I have to put another one in my truck? And that's all I have, gentlemen.
Any other questions for Highway Department today? Thank you, Tony. All right.
Well, you're on 500.
Something else?
There were two of them.
Oh, okay. Any updates on your, your poll barn?
Um, I think David got in contact with Ernest. Once we get done with some paving and get caught up a little bit, then I think we're going to start on the site because we got to do the site work.
Okay.
And then get the concrete, get the concrete done and then we'll be ready to roll. But, yeah, I think it's, it's rolling.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That gets us through our preliminaries, old business. Dwayne Ashcraft EMS, we have some recommendations from our, it was a single bid, wasn't it, Dwayne?
It was.
Okay.
The bids that we opened at the last, at the last meeting, the companies that we had talked to besides the advertisement, only one would even, would even bid because of that. And we did go through this MedX, which is, by the way, normally we have dealt in Van Work, Ohio. However, this is a company now in Elkhart, Indiana, which is a local Indiana company, which joined with the group that we had previously dealt with in Van Work. The amounts that they gave us, obviously, is for a delivery of approximately 400 days. So we're still talking from the time of delivery, the chassis. The final, on the bid, they did meet all of the specs. Myself have gone through them, two of the other guys have gone through them. So all of the specs were met to our specification, with the exception of one, but that is, is one that's proprietary. We can't bid that one because. With the exception of one, but that is, is one that's proprietary, we can't bid that one because it's where we have the sliding door on the passenger side. So that when we're on sixty-nine, it doesn't swing out and hit everybody. But that's a proprietary and, uh, you remember, we bid that one time before and had to go through and rebid, uh, because it is a patented, uh, issue of the one company and they will not even bid. And they will not talk more than six hundred days out. Now, the final price on their bid obviously was higher than what we expected, however, it was not, there are some leeway as far as the price is concerned. If by cha- if they get a four chassis, then, uh, then we will get a FEN rebate, which is about three thousand dollars per vehicle. But it still puts the bid well above a million dollars. Now, we went to the bond bank, the bond bank did take the information, they did submit it to twelve financial vendors, but that, that bid will not be here until the eighteenth, uh, Thursday, as far as. But as far as the ambulances are concerned, um, that bid does meet our specs, you know, and really the only one that we were able to get any response from whatsoever. And we're not the only agency, they're all dealing with the same thing. So the lease purchase agreement, which, um, from Penn, which is the broker, uh, Justin has, that will need to be looked at by Kyle, I'm sure.
So I guess, Dwayne gives us an interesting situation in that we won't see what the lease agreement, the financing would, would be until Thursday. What, uh, what does that do in our timing? Does that need to come back to us before we get it to the council, or?
Yeah, at this point, it's not ready to go to the council until you know what the financing options are, I think. My, my, off the top of my head, my first thought is that, uh, if you're willing to accept the bid, you would do so pending financing approval from, uh, what are institutions are available to you and the council's acceptance of that. But I'm not sure if that's something that's in your mind or what you're thinking.
But that's the only way I would go. It really would be.
And I'm not sure what the vendor, how, what their reaction to that is. I mean, I, do they expect anything different than that at this point?
I'll just have to reach out to them.
That, that's all you can do, I think, at this time. You don't, you can't say, hey, we're going to do this.
Right.
Blanket, because you don't know at this point. It'd be acceptance pending approval by the council and financing.
Now, on the payment with the financing and talking to the bond bank, an invoice for those will not, will be issued thirty days prior completion to us. Payment is not until they are completed and we have then ten days to inspect them and accept it, then payment is made. Or the arrangements. And, uh, the bond bank did say that most of the lending institutions are very much aware of the situation and are very compliant and are very, um, easy to work with. They understand the situation, um, with her, with the equipment and getting the equipment. So they didn't think there would be any problem whether, if the delivery was made in the middle of the year, whether it was postponed to the first of the next year. In that case, that would be twenty-four, uh, like we discussed before.
Are they still saying it's possible there'd be a two thousand twenty-three payment?
They, um, the bond bank said that would be something to work out with the financial institution. He said, I don't think most of them would require that, given the timeline where we're at, that he said, I don't, I don't think that will be an issue.
It would, it would just be a benefit to the county that doesn't happen till at least twenty-four.
Yes.
Just to help them in budgeting standpoint of twenty-three.
Right. So.
So let me vocalize what I think we need to do and if I'm wrong, please jump, jump right in here. We as commissioners need to approve the lease agreement pending our attorney review, financing and council approval.
You said attorney review too?
Yes.
Would it not be the acceptance of the bid as presented?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you, you, maybe acceptance of their bid, I guess, is one thing. I'm not sure that wording as far as lease, you're just purchasing those, the, the financing would become probably a lease purchase of some kind, but, but the actual acceptance of their bid is what you're looking at at this point.
Right.
Pending the other.
Yeah, pending those three things, attorney review, the financing approval and the council approval.
Remind me again who made that bid, Dwayne?
Uh, that is, the provider, uh, is MedX, M-E-D-I-X. The brokers, the agency is actually what they call PIN Care.
Okay, so I'm rewording again, we approved the MedX bid agreement pending attorney, uh, review, financing and council approval.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's all you can do at this point. There's, you don't want to blindly go into.
You might tell us the number again, too.
Okay, the, the original number minus those other discounts, which would be, would be one million forty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars.
And that is?
One million four hundred, I'm sorry, one million and forty-two thousand seven sixty-four, that's four.
That's for four complete units.
Right, four complete units.
And we just don't know the make of those units yet.
No.
That's mouthful.
So moved. I think you had a motion there, uh, pretty well.
Okay.
And, and again, three hurdles to, to get through, uh, before we would actually confirm.
So just to verbalize his so moved, we're approving the MedX bid, uh, agreement at one million forty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars for four complete units pending attorney review, financing and council approval.
That's what I said.
Yes, I'm sure I heard him say that. So we have a motion? Did you second that?
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion or questions?
Yeah, just, just one other one. So these units.
Right.
You're, you're aware of what's, they're, they're coming with and stuff. How much more are we expecting to outfit them? In other words, gurneys?
Nothing.
Nothing.
That is.
That is turnkey, they come, we can run them that day.
Now, the only, well, there may be, because the county is involved and the state with the radio system, with the mobile radio. So we may end up having an equipment cost because of going to phase two, uh, mobile radio, right, Mr. Jackson, right? Okay. But, uh, we'll see their timeline and what the timeline is the, of the ambulance, but that would be on us. That would be a part of my equipment purchase.
Might add to the discussion, too. Does that include any trade-in of old units or?
Yes, it does.
So you, how many?
Ten thousand, four of them, ten thousand a piece.
Trading in four as well, okay, that includes the trade-in.
Right.
Any other questions or discussion? Motion is on the floor. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is carried unanimous?
Turned it up, sir.
We will move that forward.
It fell down ninety.
Do you want this back on the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, this may be, this is what he has to take to the, the attorney, which.
Tuesday, the sixth.
Day after, maybe, I guess.
That, that does have the numbers on it. That's just the copy of what, what goes to Kyle.
Making a note here, we approve this pending attorney review, the finances and the council approval. Alright. Thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you. We'll, we'll be back, I'm sure.
And if they decide to do it in two hundred and fifty days instead of three hundred and some, you let us know, right?
Hey, you're right.
Okay.
I don't think that'll happen.
Alright, other old business that you're aware of. Alright, we move to new business and Carly Snyder on Drug Court.
Hi. Um, I work with Drug Court and International Overdose Awareness Day is coming up, August thirty-first is the Wednesday. We did a candlelight vigil last year and used the courthouse square lawn for it and just want to get approval to do the same this year. It'll gather, it'll be packed up and out by eight forty-five.
Do you need any kind of electricity for microphones or?
If we could.
Public address, so I'm sure that we can.
Yeah, that'd be great, if we could.
Okay, we'll just need to work with Vince, our maintenance director on that.
Okay.
And again.
What's the date?
Um, August thirty-first.
What was the time?
Eight P M. We'll, because it's candlelight vigil, so we'll do it at the end and then, um, we'll be up, I would say, no later than eight forty-five.
Right, and just as a reminder, courthouse isn't open, restroom is still available, that type of thing.
Right, just the, just the lawn.
Okay.
Okay.
Would, uh, someone make that official that we, uh, approve the, uh, Drug Court request for the, uh, candlelight vigil on August thirty-first?
So moved.
So. Motion with support. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
It's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, boy, you've been waiting so long.
My legs are numb.
Paperwork is finally here. Just the way everybody wants it, almost, right? Will you just remind us what we're looking at?
This is an ex, renewing my software agreement with Fiddler. The first one was for three years and this one's four years. So the price, it went up a little bit, but this price is locked in for four years till I have to renew again.
Alrighty, and we, we took this through the filter of our attorney and he's.
Yes.
He's made these comments and, and everybody's happy now, I think, so. And this comes out of your.
Perpetuation.
Perpetuation fund, so it's not affecting the actual general budget that way. I would entertain a motion to approve the four-year land records, uh, extension.
So moved.
And I'll second that. Alright, any other questions or, uh, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is carried.
Would you like to sign it now?
Sure. We'll be happy to sign the original. Do you want blue or do you want black?
I don't care what color you sign it. Doesn't matter for me.
Alrighty.
Thank you, sir.
Did you notice, did it, did he get to attest it?
They never have him on mine.
No liability on my part.
There you go.
Yeah, probably because it doesn't come out of my, out of the county money, it's just my situation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, do we have a representative from the Sheriff's Department? We do not.
Dell was supposed to come over and, uh, I emailed, uh, Sheriff Anthony.
Alright.
No response.
We do have in our packet, it's the, uh, agreement with Eastbrook Community Schools and, uh, we have done this multiple years. So I don't believe there is anything new that, uh, it would just be a continuation of what we've done there, paying for a part of the sheriff deputy's salary in, in order to utilize services out there at Eastbrook. Do you gentlemen have questions about this? Do we, are you ready to move on that, or do you want to?
Since there's been no changes, I'd be ready to move there.
Liability wise, for us as a county, um, is there liability that they're working through us, that officer? I'm just thinking about some of the issues that, um, school's going through, uh, with a lot of liability.
I, I know that, uh, not only Marion and, and Eastbrook have done it, I believe that our sheriff-elect is planning to, uh, to expand that to the other schools, asking them for, for buy-in. I think.
Yeah, there is some language in this agreement talking about liability going into the agreement. It talks about each party shall maintain comprehensive general liability insurance, right, this is the agreement.
And, and the only reason I bring that up is because of the backlash of authorities, uh, when there was a school shooting. You know, I, our times are changing.
Obviously, each party involved has, you should have coverage.
Yeah.
That's referred to in this document.
Okay, okay, very good. And I read that, but, but again, I guess, and, and our attorney's taken a look at this as well?
Yes.
Okay. And I too agree with, with Mr. Burton. I mean, if we've done it in the past, I, I don't see any.
I will say, I, I will say, past years was approved by our attorney. This year with no change, I'm not sure that we were granted by.
I can't say that, dude.
Yeah, and I do know that if we have no change, last year's was approved.
Okay.
Did the dollar amounts change at all, do you know? The front page talks about the cost, I don't know if that changed or not. Obviously, deputies' pay has gone up a little bit, makes sense to the original, I'm assuming, but I'm not sure.
I can't speak to that issue, but Reggie's already signed off on it, so.
Right, it's all gonna.
What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I move to approve.
And I'll second that. Mr. Burton moved to approve the Eastbrook Community School Agreement, reference, uh, Grant County Sheriff's Deputy. Second, Mr. Wright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it is approved. And.
I have it.
You have the original?
Yes.
We'll sign that here shortly, we'll just keep moving. Alright, we have Rich Taylor of Envoy, proposal for, for professional services. I think you were going to be somewhere else and you joined us, thank you.
Yes, sir, I thought it'd be important that I'd be there, so I made other arrangements with other team members to be where I was supposed to be this morning, or scheduled to be this morning. I'm honored to be here this, uh, morning, commissioners, and thank you, Justin, for your, uh, for your assistance. Uh, my name is Rich Taylor, I'm Vice President of Business Development for Envoy. Envoy is a forty-year-old, um, consulting, construction management and development company, uh, based out of Fishers, Indiana. Uh, the purpose of this professional service agreement today is to assist the county through a strategic process to plan and address facility needs for the county. We want to take you through a planning process for which we'll be, uh, address the feasibility to address the various facilities that county, the county owns and develop a plan based upon data on what is the best path forward. After we develop that plan, we will continue to represent the county as a fiduciary owners, unbiased owners representative to help select various procurement methods, various other consultants and partners to execute the plan once final development. Um, our, our contract there, uh, a little bit about our history, we're owned by, uh, John Barbie and, uh, Scott Boland, actually, uh, a former, uh, law enforcement officer for Indianapolis and also worked for the Indiana Department of Corrections when he returned from the first Gulf War, um, and is a retired Marine. We've helped many, uh, communities through, uh, uh, jail projects, county courthouse renovations, annexes, property acquisition, uh, from an owners and construction management standpoint. What differentiates. What differentiates us many times is we are also owners. We provide property management and facilities maintenance for over 300,000 square feet of buildings. And so when we are engaged on a process, we ensure that the project is built like an owner. So you'll be faced with a lot of different decisions as you approach your facility needs and we want to serve as a trusted advisor to help you through this process. Our compensation is structured as such to provide the most flexibility for the county. In the early process, it'll be a time and materials based on a rate schedule. And then once the execution has been identified, our fee will then be fixed and it has to work within the plan. So though we've talked about a fee in this proposal, that's a small percentage of the total project cost, that fee has to fit within the plan. So there'll be flexibility there to adjust as needed based on the way that the county decides to proceed with their facility needs. So I wanted just to be here today to represent the company, be here to address any questions or discuss further about the process. So I welcome any questions and honored to be here this morning.
In passing and emails and meeting with me and, I think you've been able to meet with you, we've talked about this concept for quite some time. The big wrestle is, do we take care of the current footprint and bring everything up to date? Do we look at another footprint in which we start focusing on a jail? Or do we talk about a footprint where we are relocating county government altogether? And that's what you're helping us get the data, bring things to the table and then be able to wrestle with each of those issues.
Yes, sir. Since this would also, just to be clear, we are your unbiased fiduciary agent. So this would preclude us from being a construction manager on these projects. We will represent you guys throughout the process and help them make the best decision forward. You'll be faced with many decisions related to first dollar costs and long-term maintenance costs. Understanding those issues is what we bring to the table. Our estimator, which will be part of professional services we provide, has been in the business for over 35 years, has done the Westerville Corrections Center. Our team has significant county construction experience. We helped Hamilton County master plan their entire corrections campus and then helped them execute each component as a project. In particular, that wasn't an owner's representative model, but it was called a construction manager as agent model to where we did serve as their fiduciary agent, but we were actually also the construction manager on the project. This is a little bit different, we're only your fiduciary agent and we would not serve as a construction manager. So we'd help you select partners as the best achieve your goals and run the procurement processes there.
We are anticipating approximately six months of study, is that fair?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And then if, we'll do an initial study and then there's a statutory required process to conduct a jail feasibility study that is outlined by state statute. So we will assist you through that process as well to make sure you meet all the state statute requirements.
If I might add too, it looks like on the walk down here.
Yeah.
Our attorney emailed me, he was given this Friday afternoon, so it looks like he just finished his review this morning. He did not suggest for Section 16 to remain in the agreement and there is a fee in Section 11 that he did not recommend.
Let me see here. So these were addition to the other changes, correct? Okay, 16.
Section 16, limitation of liability and there's an additional termination payment of $18,000 in Section 11 that they suggested be moved.
Okay. Section 16 talks, I think Adam added that in on his own accord later. What that does is it limits our liability other than what's provided in our insurance to the amount of the fees that we charged. So we can make those adjustments. Or we can have our two attorneys talk and work through that to get whatever the county attorney will approve. And then what was the next section?
In Section 11, he recommended that.
Section 11.
Termination process, there's additional terminations halfway into the paragraph there of $18,000.
So that was in the original agreement, but what that does is, that's basically, if we get to the execution phase, our incentives are aligned in this contract with the counties, is to get to a project that actually works. So we're timing materials up until that execution phase and then once execution, that's actually where we earn our, that's where we actually earn our fee. So if you don't get to an execution of a project, we don't get that fee. Now, the termination is basically, if we get you to execution and you decide not to move forward with the rest of the projects, that helps us recoup some of those, that fee on the end that we would not be compensated for. And that equates to basically like three months' worth of the time and material fee. So that's where that $18,000 came in. But we'd be happy to work through that and strike that. Does that make sense? What we try to do is, you know, really our process is called vision to execution. So we take your vision, your needs, and we take you through strategic planning process and feasibility process to get you to an executable project. So our incentives are aligned to do so. If we just took you through vision, through planning, that wouldn't get you very far, would it? That wouldn't address your problems. So we try to structure our compensation in our contract to reflect that. But we'd be happy to work through those items with the county attorney to address them for you. We did make the other changes that the county attorney had previously requested. One was to make sure that the E-Verify component was in there and then to ensure if we do, when we do work through you, work through the issues with you and procure a, the county procures a contractor to do the work, that they're not invested or have other dealings with Iran, that's a state requirement. So we did get those added.
Since Kyle just fired those two things over here, as literally we were coming downstairs. I don't know if you're at a point where you can negotiate right now, Rich, or you want to see what he's recommending. I believe that this is time sensitive enough that we need to move forward on this for the protection of the county. We need to get something in motion, but how do we agree on those two?
Yeah, it'd be very simple to strike the, what is in the industry's called the breakup fee, the $18,000, that's easy for me to strike. The, our attorney was, added the limited liability section, I guess, in between our last change from the county, speaking with the county attorney until this one. As a professional service provider, we don't hold any of the contracts with the trade contractors or doing any of the work. And we have provided our liability insurance coverage, which equates to, let me pull that up here, which is Exhibit B, I believe, in the contract. So we're going to carry general liability insurance to $1 million on each occurrence and $2 million in aggregate. And then professional liability insurance of $1 million per claim and $2 million in aggregate. And then an additional umbrella and excess liability insurance of $5 million each occurrence and $5 million in aggregate. What I think our attorney did was, what our attorney did was say that since we're only a professional service provider and we're not holding any of these contracts, we're not actually doing any of the construction work, that our liability should be limited to the amount that you guys pay us. So I think that's what Adam, our attorney, added, which I didn't have a conversation with him about doing that, that's just attorneys. So that's one that I would have to better understand from both councils and maybe they need to talk and get an agreement on. That'd be one that I would need to have the legal councils talk together. The $18, I'm Vice President of Business Development, I can set fees. So the $18,000 is easy to strike. The liability issues, that's when those attorneys that get paid the big bucks. So the thing, I mean, one thing to note is that I'm also on a public board and I know these issues that you guys face regularly. We're doing a lot of projects right now, the board I'm president of, we're actually using the Hoosier, the Help Lease Program right now, the Hoosiers Equipment Leasing Program, which is a great program. So I understand what you're facing. My recommendation, if I'd be so bold, is to, if you are under a time constraint, is to approve the contract pending attorney review with the commitment that, at least as of now, the $18,000 is stricken from the contract. Many times we do a lot of work with, just on a handshake, to help our clients, but we do like to have a contract in place to outline our compensation.
And I know it's happened a couple of times here under other administrations, but there've been some handshakes that
Yeah.
actually hurt the company instead of the county. And I understand Section 11 and I want to be respectful of that in some form or fashion. But I do believe we're in a time sensitive issue. If you gentlemen would entertain that concept of approving pending our attorneys working it out. Just a question.
Yes, sir.
So the compensation of a $6,000 retainer.
Yes, sir.
That is actually within the hours that you're providing, you're seeing a minimum of $6,000.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And then depending upon how long we extend this project, that $6,000 a month retainer is going to be all the way through the process until the building's, or whatever that is, is done.
Well, until you set a budget for the projects that you're moving forward with and then the fee is fixed based on.
At the 1.9%.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
That's on the bid fee, I mean, the actual bid cost?
That's on the construction value or the budget. So we'll set it at budget, but if the budget, for some reason in today's crazy construction market, ends up being higher, our fee is fixed. So you're not at risk of, if the project value changes, you're not at risk of the fee changing. We always set it at budget. When we set the budget for the project, we fix our fee. You don't want those unknowns.
I know.
And you don't want somebody who's incentivized to, after you set the budget, to allow the budget to creep up.
Who sets the budget?
Well, we'll help, we'll work.
Because you're getting a percentage of the budget, so you have an incentive to have the budget a little high.
Yeah, we'll work through that with you and that's why we fix it then. And we can negotiate down, but we just don't want it to go up in this construction.
You don't want it to go up after the amount is set, but I guess the point becomes, what's the reason why they set the budget at, I guess becomes the question.
Well, that's based on expertise and the procurement methods you guys determined, we determined to use. We'll change that. If you go design, bid, build, you're at the mercy of what the contracts come in at and how many people respond. If you go construction manager at risk, where they set a guaranteed maximum price, or you go to, because you also have the architect that is helping to provide information related to budget. So those things have to, those things have to be kosher and match. If you go build, operate, transfer, that also provides you a guaranteed budget.
That was the 1.9% fee established, is that some kind of industry-wide norm?
Yes, the, what you'll see is, until we know the lever, a level of, there's two ways to typically set this. Is once you, if you actually know the scope, and let's say you already know that it's going to be X project around X amount of dollars and et cetera, then what we can do is put an effort schedule together and put a fixed fee based on that. At this point, the owner's representative world can be anywhere from 1.5 to 2%, okay? So we picked some 2.5%. We picked somewhere in the middle of that because we don't know the full scope of what the projects will amount to. So what you see in owner's representative world is the higher the construction value, the lower the fee. The lower the construction value, the higher the fee. Because whether it's a $10 million project or a $30 million project, the level of effort from the owner's representative standpoint is about the same. So that's why the fee flexes based on the construction value.
Now, it's to your benefit if the project happens because you're going to get more dollars for your work.
Yep.
If the project doesn't happen, you're getting less, it's a retainer only, basically.
If we, one, we got to do what's in the fiduciary best interest of the county, that's our number one responsibility as owner's representative. Number two is, if we determine a path forward that the county can't fund, that is not feasible, then the project doesn't happen, right? So that's where the incentives align, right? Life is about incentives, we all, humans all operate based upon the incentives that they're approached with with any decision. So that's why we try to align our contract in that manner. Because if we don't do our job and lead the county down a path that's not executable, we don't get compensated.
Not above your retainer and your monthly expenses.
Yes, sir, yep. Which is the retainer, you know, the retainer, you know, there's true cost to us associated with that, right? And then our labor rates are also listed in there, from anywhere from our senior executives to Director of Planning to Project Management. For this type of project, we'll have our Director of Planning, Dale Davis. He has run projects for the city of Fishers, for the city of Greenwood. He will be, he will be the lead, and I'll always be available, but he will be the lead on this project.
How are you guys looking to fund or pay at this point?
We have a line item that we still haven't accessed for projects and we're going to start with that this year.
So you have appropriation placed for 22's budget to cover, whenever you start this, till the end of the year?
First part of the process is have a kickoff meeting, understand the stakeholder needs. After that, we need to do an existing conditions inspection of the facilities. Once we get through that, we can really set a better, a more firm timeline and then start doing additional evaluation. And if it's needed, then proceed with the statutory required jail study and any other additional study that's required. A lot of that we can perform in-house, some of which will need to bring on additional consultants. For the statutory required jail study, there's about four firms in Indiana that will help you procure through an RFQ process to conduct that study. There's a wide range in the quality of those studies, I'll just tell you that much.
Well, we've heard a lot, gentlemen, we have. So I'm going to try to make a motion. So I'm going to, I'm going to try to make a motion, if this is to the best of my ability, I would move that we would accept the consulting agreement from Envoy with the consideration that both attorneys need to take a look and make sure that they agree with the final outcome of that and let the commissioners know at that time, once all those changes have been made. And if, if we could go ahead and move forward with that, it would expedite the process of getting things started. And I, I too agree, we need to get moving on this thing. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. If there's anything else that needs to be added, that motion?
I think with this contract, it looks like the President or designated can, can make the, sign the agreement. So you just put that in your, your motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to move forward with the Envoy agreement pending the outcome of our attorneys working on those two points. And once we do that, the President has the authority to go ahead and sign off.
Yes.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're, we're honored to be your trusted advisor and look forward to helping you through this process. I believe each of you have my cell phone number, so feel free to text or call anytime I can be of assistance. I'll, I'll get back with our, our attorney and work with Justin to get the, connect with the county attorney and get all this worked out to the agreement of the Commissioners. We appreciate it.
This has been a long, arduous process and we're glad we've not only taken admonition from some of the council members, but folks are saying, we know we need to take care of these buildings and we, we're going to move forward with it. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Honored. Thank you, Justin.
All right. We do have one other item that we need to note today. We have been given an update, I guess this past Friday. Justin, since you're our HR guy, would you just kind of brief, brief us real quick on CDC?
Essentially, CDC changed some of their guidance and recommendations to streamline the COVID exposures and positives. The main thing that I was noting is that they're recommending that instead of quarantine, if you were exposed to COVID-19, you wear a high mask, qual, high-quality mask for 10 days and get tested on day five. So that's the main difference with their recommendations. They are no longer recommending that you quarantine for five days when exposed.
When exposed. We have done our best to parallel what CDC has recommended. This is becoming the new standard in, I think, government and CDC's aim, this is here with us and we're going to have to live with it. Let's be as, as cautious as we can. So we have been, again, following their policy and making it our own. So I would, by your consent or by motion, recommend that we alter our current policies to be in line with the CDC recommendations for the county employees.
Yes. So moved.
And I'll second. Mr. Burton made that motion and Mr. Wright seconded. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So again, we're encouraging folks, if you have any type of symptom, we encourage you to remove yourself, be tested. If you have been exposed, again, they're asking mask up for 10 days. That doesn't mean you, you cannot come to work. They're saying you can mask up and go to work, but on the fifth day, they are asking for a, a test to make sure that you're not positive. And then quarantine would go into effect if you were. So we're, we're moving forward. Good, bad, or indifferent, but we're, we're headed forward. All right.
I'll modify the language and get it distributed once it's completed.
All right. Other new business that you're aware of, gentlemen?
No.
All right. This is a public meeting and as always, we will go, anyone who wants to speak to the Board of Commissioners outside of solar, if you have an issue that you'd like to bring before us, present your name, your address, any concerns or comments. No movement there. If you would like to address the board reference solar, we'll take about 10 minutes here. If that's all right? And we'll, we'll do some follow-up.
Hi, Randy Atkins, 8560 South, Willing, Buckskin Mountain, Indiana. As a newly appointed APC member by the County Council, I think it's important that I continue to gain as much information as I can about solar as this county deals with that. So I made a trip and I think Steve made this trip this weekend. I went to East of Modoc, Indiana, State Road 26 to see an actual solar farm, industrial solar farm on ag land. It appeared to be somewhat complete. I, there were some concerns that, that came from what I viewed and I want to share that with you. The first picture there is a picture of a pretty large tract of ground. There were several tracts of ground that were at that side, as I think Steve can confirm. I was somewhat surprised about the intensity in which those were stacked in there. And I understand it would be the goal of the solar company to stick as many panels in as small, as large an area as they could. There wasn't a whole lot of room between those panels. This is somewhat different lay of ground than I think what, what Grant County has. This was a little more rolly ground. It appears that the solar companies are targeting our most flattest ground. This had a little contour to it. The other thing I noticed that might be different from where the solar is searching in Grant County is you see more wood lines. And those wood lines create a natural barrier to some degree. There's not a whole lot of wood line, tree lines like that in some of the prime farm ground in Indiana or in Grant County that concerns me, especially in my, in my area over there in Jefferson Township. So I don't know that we would get those natural screening that the tree lines are creating there. It did appear that they sprayed some sort of weed killer in the front there. That's, that's why those weeds or that vegetation is yellow. The second picture, this, this was a great concern to me. I don't know whether that, whether you can call that, I don't know what, what the term is, I should know that. Underneath the solar panels, the ground cover, I believe.
Ground cover brush?
Yeah. That concerns me greatly because I can testify as a farmer in Grant County, that Grant County's soil is better than this and our weeds will grow taller than this. That's a ragweed. That's a very difficult weed for farmers to control due to its resistance to some of the herbicides that we use today. So that picture concerns me. I'd call that a failure on ground cover maintenance is what I would call that. The third picture there is screening. And I think Steve had noted one time in a conversation I had with him about the concern that he had with screening. I don't know how many years it would take those bushes to actually create a screening barrier. But I would call that a failure too. I know this is a difficult issue and I've stated publicly that I think it's important that we get this right so that we're not faced. I, I, my empathy goes to Ryan and his staff, knowing that he, as I understand, is going to be the enforcement of this. You know, and I can tell you, as a Grant County farmer, it would be difficult for me to be an adjoining landowner with the kind of maintenance that's taking place with this particular solar farm. So thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just say this, Randy, thank you for stepping up and going on to the APC and looking forward to working with you on that.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Wayne Valentine. Live at 5620 South, 1050 East, upwind, 46989. I've got a, I've got a problem with the road out in front of my house, 1050 East. From 500 South to 600 South, the road is quite, quite narrow. I measured the road yesterday. The difference, went up and down the road for about an hour and a half measuring and the narrowest portion of the road from asphalt to asphalt is 14 and a half feet. And we try to get too far to pass on that. You've got a ditch on both sides of the road. The ditch is almost about a foot deep on both sides. Now, in the wintertime, I spend most of my time pulling people out of the ditch because the road is so narrow, when they do get their one wheel off, it just pulls right over into it. Farmers, when the, when they can go to harvest their crops, park the semi in there. And it is hard as heck to get around that semi when they're filling, filling their truck up with grain and stuff like that. When they come down and especially, oh, they, they redid County Road 600 South from upland to the county line. That asphalt is 21 feet wide, I measured it. Where the lead-in to the county road of 1050, it got narrowed down to nine, 19 feet, which that's the widest portion of the road right there. It averages 15 feet wide all the way through from 500 South to 600 South. That's about an average width. I've got some pictures here that I've taken, but I don't like the quality of them. But I've got one picture here that shows a car that passed me. And it showed the relationship of that car to the road. And you can see that there's not enough room beside that car. You want to pass it down, everybody please? I've got commentary on the back also. So what I'm here for is to try to see if we can get County Road 1050 widened a little bit. Right now, it's about, like I said, on the average, 15 feet wide. And that's just from asphalt to asphalt. In fact, it's only been paved, I moved there in 1989. It's only been paved with the regular asphalt paving once. Rest of the time, they chip and seal. This summer, when they were working on County Road 600 South, repaving it, which did a great job on it, the dump, the dump trucks come in, come down our road, the humidity and the temperature was so hot that it was actually, all the black you see on the road is the asphalt working its way up, past the road, past the rocks. The trucks actually had, were so much weighted down that it actually put the, took some of the asphalt out on the truck and scattered it out. So now we've got dips in the road. That, that road is not very, not very smooth at all. As you go down the road, your vehicle will sway, it bumps like this, and that's probably causing some of the problems with the road surface not being very, very smooth at all, along with the heat and the asphalt coming up through the, through the, through the chip and seal while they're ever doing, done that road in the last 20 years.
Wayne, I've got you at 5620, 1050 East, is that right?
Yeah. 5620 South, 1050 East.
Okay. And so we want to look at the, the width of County Road 1050 East, see if there's anything that we can do to, to make that more traversable.
A little wider, that's what, what I'm looking for. Now, we had a railroad track right there. I don't know if you know this or not, but the power company came down there and gave everybody along 1050 a survey. Got a free survey out of the deal. We don't have our property lines right now. What they're doing is putting the transmission line down the railroad track. In fact, they've got a meeting on that on Wednesday. They're going to be putting, oh, new towers up, which means that they're going to have to have a, a concrete basis for these aluminum towers going up for the transmission lines. Well, they're going to be coming down 1050 to get to the railroad track and go each way, east and west. 1050 is going to be, good enough road for that to support all the equipment that's going to be coming down. We do have semis come down our road and they don't leave much room for a person to pass. With an average, he's missed 30 feet wide, right? Imagine the county roads are that way also. I don't know what the, what the proper width is, must be for county road. Now, and that, one picture showed that there's not enough room for one, another car. You've got to wait for a, come up to somebody's driveway to pull over a little bit for a tractor, barn tractor, one of the big sprayers that you, that you drive under. Semis, we've had WOES delivery trucks, that's another one. I seen him run a guy off the road because he couldn't get off because once the road stops, there's a ditch right there. Now, if we just get it widened out a little bit and move the ditch over to one side, there's enough road, road on each side, we can, they can do that. So that's my problem with the County Road 1050. We'll see about getting it done because from 600 South to 700 South, oh man, that's a wider road. Two cars would pass it out on that real easy. But my road is not wide enough to do, to do that safely. Like I said, we do, we, I, I take a lot of people out of the ditch during the wintertime. And that railroad track, I've got pictures here of that. I know there's nothing you can do about the railroad track, but that's only big enough for one car to pass on.
Wayne, do you have an email that we can get after the meeting so that we can tie you into the discussion with Highway Department?
Sure. W A Y V A L E N T I at ATT.net.
Easy enough. We will put this inquiry together with the Highway Department, tie you in on, on the dialogue and see where we go.
Yeah. Now, this picture right here is Berry Street, 1050. 10, this is County Road 1050 going this way, Berry Street's going this way. Now, when they tied in Berry Street, the asphalt to the County Road 1050, you can see that the asphalt they put in is a lot wider than what Berry Street is. And at the other end, you know, they got to cut this out so they can blend it in, make it nice and smooth. They didn't do that on the 500 County roadside. They, they cut it out, but when they redid County Road 500 South, about, what, four or five years ago, they didn't blend it in at all. So there's about a one inch drop as you come off of 500 South onto 1050. You got to make, got to make a wide turn because you got to, that, that bumps pretty bad right there.
We will, we will get Mr. White involved in this conversation and I'm sure he or Tony will get out there and take a look and see what they can do for us.
I was hoping these pictures could show you what I was talking about, but none of the bumps show up in this thing. And the ditches are covered with weeds, so you can't actually see how deep they are. Also, when they had State Road 5 shut down because of replacing two bridges, a lot of the traffic went on County Road 800 East. Between, between County Road 300 North and 400 North, there's a bridge right there on 800 East. That has got a drop like that on both ends of the bridge. They need some asphalt there or something to make it smoother to get across. Unless you hit that, I'm surprised nobody busted a tire yet. But everybody that was going that route, well, State Road 5 was shut down. So.
I think I actually took that route too.
Yeah. You found that bridge.
We will follow up with that too.
Yeah, that, that one definitely needs it.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay. If any further questions, want my phone number too?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Anyone else before we go into recess? Anyone else before we go into recess? All right. We are technically scheduled for the day following Labor Day. That is September the 6th. At 10:00 a.m., since we have a holiday on Monday. So we will be in recess until September the 6th, 10:00 a.m. Thank you. Thank you. Should I sign the documents? Did you make the sign everything, didn't you?
Justice got over there.
Oh.